Good morning. I'll call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, February 26.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation led today by Pastor Drew Redding of Grace Community Fellowship in Ottawa.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Zephaniah 3:17 reads as such, "The Lord your God is with you, the mighty warrior who saves. He will take great delight in you; in his love he will no longer rebuke you, but will rejoice over you with singing." Let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we embark into this Lenten season, we pray that you would be ever more at the forefront of our lives, of our worship. We pray, Heavenly Father, that you would carry us forward in a spirit of submission to you. You would guide and direct every aspect of our lives, from our personal to our public and professional lives. We pray that you would guard over us as we pursue you. We pray for this county, for Franklin County, Lord God, that you would be here, present here, that this would become a county that is known for loving you. We pray these things in your Son's holy name. Amen.
Correspondents' organizational business. No public comment. Our consent agenda today is going to be for tax change orders in the amount of a negative Approve minutes for February 19th meeting, our study session minutes from the 24th, and consider approve designating the following dates for spring cleanup days. For the city of Ottawa, roll off containers April 4th and 5th, east of Highway 59, roll off containers April 10th and 11th, west of 59, roll off containers April 17th and 18th, and for county residents, April 24th and 25th. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right, we're going to run through our items of business because they are not very many or not very long at least, and then we have a lot of people here for the Celebrate Our Years of Service Awards, and we'll get to that. Our first item of business is to consider for approval the East Central Kansas Public Health Coalition updated agreement. Morning, Midge.
So this has not changed yet. We've had this agreement since 2003 with our eight county, our seven other counties as regional partners in addressing public health preparedness.
How many counties?
There's eight counting us. So Coffey, Lyon, Morris, Chase, and I just forgot, Wabunsee, who'd I forget? Osage and Coffey. So we've had this since 2003 and worked together. We've expanded the agreement to include other areas of work besides preparing us. What has really changed is kind of the formatting of the agreement as well as Lyon County government, you know, dropped the Health Department and contracts directly with Flint Hills Community Health Center for their public health services. So it really kind of voids the agreement. Those are basically the changes of this agreement, but we do, would appreciate being able to continue to work together and by showing your support.
It's still the same, we just need to update the legalese. Is there a, how do we have this worded?
So can we make a thing in there that if we come down with a coronavirus person, then we can just send them to them and not keep them here?
Oh, with the coronavirus. Not sure.
The government yesterday said it's not a matter of when, but, or if, but when.
You know, it's possible, certainly, yeah. CDC is doing a good job in maintaining control at this point.
Is there a motion to approve the East Central Kansas Public Health Coalition agreement dated February 1st, 2020?
Make the motion.
Second?
Right.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes, for a sec, thank you.
Thank you.
Our second item of business, we're going to consider soliciting bids for the 2020 Chip Seal Project.
Commissioners, this year we are looking at a 50-mile project. Most of the, most of the roads are in the southeast portion of the county, except for Colorado Road from Old 50 down to the Anderson County line, which was originally part of last year's project, but we pulled it out to help with some other road maintenance. So we're, we've added that back in, and so we would like to move forward with this project. One of the things that we did to help expedite things, we moved up the completion date. It has historically been in October. We moved that up to kind of the middle of September to take better advantage of the weather during that time period. Other than that, everything is very similar. We have, the last, I don't know, four or five years, we have used the Haydite material rather than the limestone chips. The cost difference has generally been roughly $100,000. One of the things that we may want to consider this year is moving to the, going back to the limestone chip in order to put that $100,000 to use patching roads and doing some of that. So that is, once we get the bids back, we always bid it both ways with both material. Once we get that information back, we will take a closer look and see if the benefits of the Haydite material, if that outweighs the additional use of those extra dollars. So we'll analyze all that before we bring it back to you.
One of the reasons we went to the Haydite was because the man came in and talked to us about it and told us we'd be able to go to a six-year rotation instead of a five-year rotation if we actually...
I've looked and researched all of that, and the normal is anywhere from four to five. Some places go with six years. There are even a few that go with a seven-year rotation. It's hard. I would say it would be difficult, considering the weather that we've had last year and this year, to put that off, that sixth year. But certainly going forward, that that, we will continue to look for opportunities to spread this out a little bit if our roads are holding up. We have so many problem areas. We're starting to see some frost boils develop on our asphalt roads that we haven't seen before, and so all of those things contribute to the timeline on the chip and seal. And so we want to evaluate things on a year-by-year basis. You know, Jeff and I traveled these roads that we're recommending this year, and they're definitely in need of, in need of this. And as we inspect the roads through this pavement program that we're getting ready to start, we will have a much better idea on length of time and when we need to do these road maintenance activities. So later this, probably this summer, we'll be able to have another discussion about what we plan to do in the future.
But we're going to issue these bids for Haydite then, or both ways?
We always bid both the Haydite and the limestone chips. And so we have that historical information, and it has typically been around $100,000 that the Haydite is more expensive. And there are some, some great benefits to the Haydite, but when we are trying to stretch our dollar, it, you know, it might be a better decision to go with the limestone this cycle in order to use those to help repair our roads.
And I like your idea of, we don't do them just because they're on the schedule. We do them because they need it. So you go out and inspect them, so, yeah, then you're getting the roads done that really need it, yeah.
Availability of the Haydite or expanded shales becomes such an issue. The state of Kansas is buying theirs a year and a half in advance. It's just, it keeps getting farther out. I don't think there's a future in it anyways.
It's, I think that every bit of material that they produce is sold.
Have you looked at, I don't know if it'd be any more or less, or if it'd be somewhere between the two, like Trap Rock or...
I haven't looked at...
Iron Mountain, Trap Rock comes out of the Dakotas, Iron Mountain comes out of Missouri.
Yeah, I have not investigated those materials and those manufacturers, but that is certainly something that we can, we can do moving forward.
But it as an alternate? In the past, too, one of the issues we had with limestone was chalking and not having good adhesion. I imagine we were just getting dirty material?
Yep.
We could probably fix that just by better quality control or...
We are, we are spec-ing wash material for that very reason. And so I think we are doing a little bit better job on, on inspecting the material that is put down. We've had the same gentleman, you know, monitoring that for the last several years, so he's a lot more adept at it than he ever started, so.
One of the last years we put the limestone stuff down, I think was the year that they came in so late, it was already starting to turn cold, and like you said, it didn't stick, and we had all kinds of issues with complaints on chip windows and everything else. But I think a lot of that was, besides probably not being totally clean, was how late it was put down, and that's kind of when I think the next year we went over to the Haydite.
And that's, that's one of the reasons that I moved up the date. The end date is in order to hopefully not get into those colder, colder days.
Any other questions for David? Comments? Is there a motion to approve soliciting bids for the 2020 Chip Seal Project?
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right, our third item of business, consider soliciting bids for the 2020 Painted Pavement Marking Project.
Commissioners, this, this always goes right along with the Chip Seal Project. We will solicit paint bids to do the striping on the 50 miles.
Do you ever have more than one bid on the striping?
Not in the last few years.
Doesn't the contractor reuse, I mean, they do Douglas County's roads, they basically do everyone in this area, right?
Correct. For the, for the Chip Seal, last year I contacted six outfits directly. We had two bids. I've got another name that we'll throw into the mix this year for the, for the painted, for the striping. I think I contacted three or four. I will contact them again, but typically it's, it's this one outfit, and they are the vendor for most of the communities that do this work.
We, I remember having this discussion last year because if you'll recall, at least the three of you who are on the board, the year before last, we were not happy with the job that they did on the painting, and we had to have them come back and redo some of it. So we were pretty adamant that we get more interested parties, and they're just not, they're not there. And so, but luckily, the contractor did a much better job last year, which is more consistent with, you know, normally they have done a good job, so hopefully it goes.
We only had half as much road last year for them to do when they got here, too, but...
Yeah, that's true.
Normally even when we have 50 miles, they're in here for, luckily, a day and a half and they're gone, so. I followed them once when they were doing one, the roads, and they don't, they move at a pretty good clip when they're putting that paint down. They don't, they go over it pretty fast, so.
David, on the, on the paint, do you specify the quality of the paint in the bid?
We do not have a spec that I'm aware of. Again, this is, I think they use the same thing that they use in, in every other community. I can certainly verify that.
Doesn't work, then they're going to get complaints, and then they're going to get a bid again, so, yeah.
All right, is there a motion to solicit bids for the 2020 Painted Pavement Marking Project?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Brings us to staff reports. Derek?
I want to talk just a little bit about Public Works. David and I met for several hours on Monday. Was a nice meeting, but I also, I, I want to give the Board some perspective on where we're at, at least under David's tenure with Public Works. And I think there is a, a strong desire, I mean, we understand what the weather's been, to help Public Works, throw resources at Public Works so that we can make sure our roads are in as good a condition as possible, and I certainly understand that and agree with it to some extent. But David is just getting his feet wet. I mean, he came here and he had, he has great ideas on how we can streamline things, how we can make Public Works more efficient, how we can get more out of our staff. He has not been able to incorporate that vision whatsoever. I mean, he's been in triage mode basically since the day he walked in the door, and it won't be until we get out ahead of this and that he is able to incorporate his vision that we're really going to know what it is that we need there. And so I would ask the Board to be patient with us, the public be patient with us. You know, we, we need to get some normalcy here so that he can utilize his staff and his methods as he sees fit, and then, you know, then we'll see what it is that we need. Friday and then Monday, we are interviewing a handful of candidates for the HR Director position. We've got a curated list of questions that we're pretty happy with, put a panel together that represents a pretty good cross-section of the county. David, myself, Janet, Midge Ransom, Casey. So hopefully, you know, we'll see what those interviews yield, but it's a process that we've approached aggressively, and it is a concern. We, we've got Gala here through, I think, at the very latest, the end of May, so that's not a lot of time, particularly when you're looking at bringing somebody in who, in all likelihood, isn't going to have experience with this organization. But that all being said, I'm also not going to put somebody in that position just to have a warm body there. If we don't have the right candidate, then we won't have the right candidate, and some combination of existing staff, including myself, will run HR until we find the right person. But certainly hope that you all have patience with that, hope that our staff has patience with that. You know, David's a good example of someone who, I know there are moves that he wants to make in Public Works, and I've told him, I support them, I'm fully on board, but while we're in this transition phase with HR, it's, I mean, this is one of the areas where you suffer because it's hard to, you know, when you're talking about changing your structure a little bit, those things, you know, you, you want to have your, you know, your permanent HR Director here. I mean, right now, we're basically keeping the train going down the tracks, making sure that we're in a steady place for the next person, so. But I will keep you apprised of our progress on that front. That's all I have.
All right. We have a lot of department heads here, so I'm going to go to my regulars, and if anybody else wants to speak, throw your hand up. Casey, anything?
Sheriff?
You're good. You're going to pass, all right. Paul?
Good morning. I was at the Williamsburg City Commission meeting last night. Thought it'd be a good idea to keep an eye on Commissioner Howard, so I did that. I'll be at Wellsville this evening to keep an eye on Commissioner Stottlemeyer. Seriously, the reason I was there is we have a new industry that's extremely interested in locating just on the west side of Williamsburg, and that is a sawmill and a door manufacturer does hospital and school doors, and they have a patent for a special kind of door. Be anywhere from 50 to 80 jobs. The commission last night hired their bond representative, who is a contact I had through Kansas State Bank, and so he'll be negotiating a bond situation with the potential investors in the, in the business as far as what kind of abatements and those types of things. So they're working on those things, but the commission was very excited and eager to have that business and industry locate there. We've been working on this for a couple of months. They have a sawmill in St. Paul, Kansas, and I went down there a couple of weeks to just kind of eyeball what is it we're getting into and what's it look like, and to meet the people and kind of quiz and test some, some information I'd heard, which they passed with flying colors, but they are interested. When, one of the questions I asked is, how many of you guys are going to move up to Williamsburg? And they said, we don't plan on any of us, we plan to hire local. And that was consistent with what I'd heard before. So it'll be new additional jobs to the region, pretty good paying jobs. The, it's the kind of industry where there's not any hazard materials, there's no waste. They basically use some more power, so we'll be working on electrical, and that'll be the big thing, is access to and from this property for trucks and also the power. And so we'll be working through that in the coming months with the engineers in the city and the county. But it's exciting that we'll be able to, to get and attract that, that industry and that business, and so I wanted to, to share with you that we're excited that something's coming to Franklin County, and, and it'll be a big boom for Williamsburg when this, if, if it happens. It hasn't happened yet, so we can't, can't say it's a done deal, but I defer to Commissioner Howard if he has any, any other information or corrections based on what I reported. Wanted to share that.
You pretty much stole the thunder.
Sorry. Thanks, Paul.
David?
Commissioners, I'll keep my remarks brief also. On April 16th, there is the 2020 County Commission and Road Official Meeting down in Chinute. I know Don was on the, the email list for that, but I wanted to extend the invitation to the rest of you, if you wanted to attend, we'll, we will get you down there. Also, we're beginning to put together a list of miscellaneous items for Purple, Purple Wave or another auction site. We'll be bringing that to you, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. We're starting to assemble the pictures and the descriptions and that sort of thing that we'll bring to you. And it's not just road and bridge items. I think there's some solid waste. I know Maintenance has a few items as well, and we'll be reaching out to the, to Derek and the rest of the department heads to see if there's anything else that, that they would want to include. That's, that's all for today.
All right, Janet. Commissioners' comments, Board reports. Don, anything?
Like I said, we're going Wellsville tonight. I'm going to keep a eye on Mr. Bean. But anyhow, the only thing I might add to report, I was contacted by Mr. Norton, which is the president of Project 17, and if you all know Heather Morgan stepped down that position here a few months ago, and he contacted me, and, and they're planning on restructuring that organization, and wanted to know if I'd be interested in representing. They didn't have anybody from this area on that right now, so when I find out more, I'll let you know, but for this moment, they're not hiring anybody at this moment, but they want to restructure before they hire. The only other thing I might add is we're interviewing next week for the solid waste, six-county solid waste coordinator. They had 16 applicants, and they got narrowed down to three, and if you just go by the applications, man, they got some, I'm surprised, they got those really good applications for the position, so hopefully they're wanting to hire somebody right on the spot after we do it. They're not, Charlene will transfer over, is our coordinator, she'll be on the board. She wants to stay on the board. She just doesn't want to be the coordinator. So that's all I have.
Yeah, like Paul said, Williamsburg, actually, Williamsburg meeting last night was a special meeting called. It wasn't their monthly council meeting. They called it a special meeting. The main topic they called it for was, they're in the process of looking into chip and sealing all of the streets in Williamsburg. They applied for a grant sometime back. They've got it. It's one of the match-type grants that's going to cost the city in the neighborhood of $400,000 to match this and do this. So last night, they had a gentleman there, one of the engineers that's been involved with this project, looking at it. He was there to talk to him, kind of how the process would go, how they would do this, step by step, more or less. And then they had someone there that also talked about bonds and how they might finance this project. She talked about the bonds and the way they could repay them. They had different options, and she was going to look into the options more. One would be going on the property tax in Williamsburg, another would be going on utilities. It's kind of in the initial stage. It looks pretty much like it's going to go, but they have a lot more to do as far as these bonds and how they're going to pay them back. There was a few people there that had some major concerns about the paying this back. There's not a lot of people out there to help pay this back, and anyway, the, it looked like they were kind of leaning towards the property tax. The main concerns was if they do utilities. There's a lot of people own property in Williamsburg. It's lots, it's using utilities, so they're not going to be paying on this. It sounds like they feel like the property tax is fair, everybody has property, and the town will be helping pay some of this. So that's what the special meeting was mainly called for, and then, like Paul said, there was a gentleman there to talk to him about bonds, and I think they did hire him last night, and he's going to help him through all the process with the bonds for the roads and also for the sawmill. So that's what that meeting was about, and that's kind of where it was left, so that's all I have.
Ian?
I went to the City of Ottawa Commission meeting last Wednesday. They had a couple of items of business. One of them was to set up a land bank, and basically this is to be able to take care of the coves, the specials on the cove, so that those can be utilized. And then they have an agreement between the Lincoln, Ottawa, Harrison Townships, made it more formalized so that anytime there's a call, structure fire on either the city or right outside of town, that they would all be called. And then they also are getting funds, the federal exchange funds for their roads of quite a bit amount, so, and that's it. And then I attended the joint meeting of, we had the city, the school board, and the county last Wednesday, and then I got a chance to be a part of the county COFO program for the first time last Thursday morning. And if anybody doesn't know about that, it's about 8:10 on every Thursday, either a county commissioner or a county official will, something that's, that's going on around the county. It's not very long, but tune in. And then don't forget the census. You'll be getting information, please fill those out, or if you need help, you can do it online, you can do it by phone, just do it.
Roy?
I went to the area agency on aging last night, Board Meeting, and we talked about some capital needs that the area agency needs. They need a new roof on their building, and they're looking at putting a carport or garage out at the Radish Patch there in the north industrial park for loading, loading their wheels-on-wheels truck. They want to be undercover for that project, and some basic personnel policy, handbook changes, and they gave us their annual audit and told us to look at it at our leisure time to see if there's any questions we had, and there wasn't any problems with the audit. And one other thing, I ran into a bunch of guys working on the new project, new gas line that's going from Weld up here to through Franklin County, and so there'd be a lot of extra people in town, staying in our motels and also working on that project. They're starting on this end of the project and working south to clear the right-of-way and then start laying the new pipe any time now, and $180 million project, so it's a pretty good economic boom for not only Anderson County, but... for not only Anderson County, but Franklin County too. So welcome those people to town if you see any of those people in the restaurants and stuff.
All right. Now the good part. You want to do the recognition and then we can adjourn real quick so we don't have to worry about. All right, let's do this, Casey?
Do you guys want to come down?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so each year, the Kansas Association of Counties recognizes employees and elected officials for their cumulative years of service to any county in the state of Kansas. And this is not to be confused with our Franklin County Service Awards that are given each year based on years of service to Franklin County. So this is cumulative years of service to the state of Kansas. Kansas Association of County Awards are given for the completion of eight-year increments. And then at 16 years, you get a pin and on up. So those being honored today completed their recognized years of service on their anniversary date in 2019. So at this current time, they may have more than eight years or 16 years or 24 years. Anyways, as I call your name, please come up and get your certificate or pin. And we will take a group photo at the end, but we'll also take a group photo of each year increment that we're recognizing. So the following individuals have been recognized for eight years of service to Kansas. And if you could wait to applaud and tell the, I'm done with the list, I would appreciate that. So Crystal Donaldson, Crystal works in the Emergency Communications Department and otherwise known as Dispatch. Janaye Fleming also works in Emergency Communications. Tom Winter, Tom came to Franklin County from Harper County and he works for Emergency Management. Kim Breckisen, Kim works for the Public Works Department. Shane Wilson, Shane also works for the Public Works Department. And Todd Rhodes, Todd works at the Juvenile Detention Center. Thank you to these folks for their eight years of service. Next, we will recognize five individuals for 16 years of service to Kansas counties. They are Michael Hasty. Michael worked for Johnson County before coming to Franklin County. And he works for Emergency Services. Debbie Hunter, Debbie works in the County Clerk's Office. She's our deputy clerk. Deanne Farrell, Dee works with Larry in Planning and Zoning. Peg Pearson, Peg works in the Solid Waste Department. And Lael Seaton, Lael works for the Department of Motor Vehicle. Okay, and finally, we have three individuals who have dedicated 24 years or more to Kansas counties. And that is Erin Mayo. Erin works for Emergency Services. He came to Franklin County after previously working in Miami County, Douglas County and Lyon Counties. And he's been with Franklin County for 12, approximately 12 of those 24 years. Tammy Alexander. Tammy devoted 24 years of her life to Franklin County. And she works at the Adult Detention Center. And Darren Rocker. Darren has also devoted 24 years to Franklin County and he works for the Solid Waste Department. Thank you all. So on behalf of the commissioners and all of Franklin County, I just want to thank you for your years of service and for serving our public. There will be a small reception in the back, so please help yourself. And if the award recipients will come back up here, we'll take a, a group photo really quick after you adjourn.